Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor, please. We're about to begin. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, quiet on the floor, please. At this time, please place all electronic devices to vibrate. Mr. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the stated meeting of September 29th, 2022. I'm Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'd like to thank you for joining us today. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Here.
Aviles. Ayala.
Here.
Barron. Bacher.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Caban.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Here.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Joseph.
Present.
Kagan. Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte. Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera. Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez. Cholman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velazquez. Vernikoff. Williams.
Here.
Palladino. Wond. Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
I am present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Mallory Jean Pierre, Senior Pastor at Baraka Baptist Church, located at 9602 Flatlands Avenue in Brooklyn.
To Speaker Adrian Adams, to New York City Council members, I bring greetings to you from Baraka Baptist Church. It's located in Canarsie section of Brooklyn, New York. Special thanks to my Councilwoman Mercedes Narcisse, 46th District. A Baptist missionary named Arthur Ward once said, "Flatter me, and I may not believe you. Criticize me, and I may not like you. Ignore me, and I may not forgive you. But encourage me, I will not forget you." Today, I will not forget this body of New York City Council because you have encouraged me. As a Haitian pastor of one of the largest Haitian churches in New York City, you've encouraged me in three ways. I am encouraged because there are four Haitian-American Council members in this chamber: Chey Osay, Councilwoman Rita Joseph, Councilwoman Farrah Lewis, and my very own Councilwoman Mercedes Narcisse. I am encouraged. The second reason I am encouraged is that the Haitian-American Council members were all appointed to chair positions. That is very encouraging. And the third reason I am encouraged is because this body, the Council members, on August 11th, the day after my birthday, passed a historic maternal health package. This is amazing, and I am so proud of you. I thank God for you. I am more encouraged because this bill that was passed helps the Haitian women in New York City specifically, and more so because they have the highest rate of maternal mobility than any other race and any other woman. I am grateful. So I want to encourage you as you've encouraged me because they say, hurting people hurt people. But I say, encouraged people encourages people. And I want to encourage you with Hebrews Chapter 10, verse 24 and 25. "And let us consider how we may spur on one another towards love and good deeds, not giving up together, meeting together, as some have in the habit of doing, but encouraging one another and all the more as you see the day approaching." And then the prayer of Moses says, "May the favor of our Lord, our God, rest on us. Establish the works of our hands for us." Yes, establish the work of our hands. Father God, bless this meeting. Bless the Council members. Continue to strengthen them that they may do your work. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us here today. I'm now going to ask Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse to spread the invocation on the record.
I am delighted to welcome Pastor Mallory Jean Pierre of Baraka Baptist Church, located in the 46th District, to the City Council chambers today, and thank him for delivering today's invocation. Baraka Baptist, which he leads, he is a religious institution, which has contributed immensely to the ethical and spiritual values of the Canarsie community and beyond. Pastor Jean Pierre has built a reputation of being deeply caring pastors who is always on call for his congregates and community. Pastor Jean Pierre, like myself, was born in Haiti. He was born to a Haitian father and a Dominican mother. He is married to a Jamaican wife. He has a Puerto Rican daughter-in-law, an African-American son-in-law, and a Trinidadian sister-in-law. His family is truly the epitome of what makes New York City such a beautiful and great place. Again, I thank him for his outstanding efforts in the 46th Council District and for bringing a small taste of Baraka Baptist Church and Haitian to the Council chambers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. We now will have the adoption in a minute by Councilmember Sanchez.
Sanchez?
I'll read the motion. I'll make a motion the minute of the stated meetings of September 6th, 2022, be adopted and printed. We'll now have messages and papers from the mayor.
M93 Mayor's Management Report.
Received order, printed and filed.
Communications from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to begin today by addressing the issues related to the thousands of people arriving in New York City who are seeking asylum from their home countries. Some have been sent from other states here to New York City in political acts that are dehumanizing. These are human beings, many of whom are fleeing desperate economic conditions and political violence. They have been through so much already, and it's important that they are met with the compassion, care, and decency that they have been deprived of. Even before their arrival, our city was already grappling with the housing crisis and high rates of homelessness. There are continuing problems with the shelter intake and placement process, the poor conditions of shelter facilities themselves, and a lack of access to healthy food, safety, and wraparound services. In many ways, the focus on those seeking asylum and how to meet their needs has highlighted the deficiencies in our current processes that must be addressed. Yet, the support needs for those seeking asylum is both unique and, in some ways, common to longtime New Yorkers who require comprehensive support getting back on their feet. It requires the type of coordinated services across agencies that we must make available for all New Yorkers facing significant challenges, whether it's mental health support, food assistance, or support for school-aged children of affected families. We also know that the city cannot solve this international crisis by itself. We need support and assistance of our state and federal partners to humanely care for the migrants who are arriving in our city. There are employment barriers that must be removed by the federal government, funding assistance from other levels of government, and additional support. As a council, we are focused on identifying the gaps, facilitating the coordination with our government and nonprofit partners, and advancing solutions to ensure that everyone gets the help they need. Through our oversight capacity and other actions, we will work to confront this challenge and meet the needs of those seeking asylum in a comprehensive manner. We have already held one hearing on the issues prevalent in our intake and shelter system. Tomorrow, we will hold another hearing on the various issues that those seeking asylum face in accessing stability in our city. This is a pivotal moment for our city, one that will be watched closely around the world. It's up to us as New Yorkers to show leadership, empathy, and kindness to people who have already endured so much. We will show that we can come together as a city, put aside our differences, and work collaboratively towards solutions. We can demonstrate what New York City's about, our values, and our commitment to all who come here seeking refuge and help. I also want to acknowledge the devastating toll and impact that Hurricane Fiona has caused the people of Puerto Rico, the Dominican Republic, and other Caribbean islands. Puerto Rico is often called New York City's sixth borough because of our long-established relationship with the island and its people. Our city would not be what it is today without the contributions of our Puerto Rican and Dominican communities. That's why our city is responding with such urgency in the aftermath of Fiona. It has only been five years since Hurricane Maria left Puerto Rico devastated and without electricity and clean drinking water. It destroyed homes, displaced families, and upended communities in the process. As a city and country, we must do everything we can to provide immediate relief for those impacted, not just by contributing to the on-the-ground recovery efforts, but also advocating for necessary policy changes. Earlier this week, I am proud to have joined our council colleagues of Puerto Rican descent to send a joint letter to Washington, urging our federal government to create a waiver for the Jones Act so essential supplies reach the island faster and deliver the resources that people need. I know so many of us in this room have visited the island, are supporting fundraising efforts, or are collecting donations in our individual districts. New Yorkers are once again demonstrating care and compassion in the wake of tragedy, and I want to take a moment to thank everyone who continues to support the families and people devastated by Hurricane Fiona. Over the past month, our city has been mourning the loss of two New Yorkers who died while on the job. On September 12th, 46-year-old Papa Cooley died while working on a 14-story project at a construction site in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. He leaves behind a family, and we send love and condolences to them for their loss. On September 14th, a 30-year-old Ronald Ortiz, a construction worker and electrician, was shot and killed during his lunch break in East New York. He is remembered by family and friends as a gentleman, a kind soul who excelled at sports. We also send love and condolences to his family, friends, and community. This week, our Jewish communities here in New York City and around the world celebrated Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. I hope everyone has a happy and sweet New Year filled with peace, prosperity, and good health. Next week marks the start of Yom Kippur, the holiest day of the year, so I want to wish all New Yorkers who are observing an easy and meaningful fast. And for those celebrating... I'm going to get this right. Sukkot. Sukkot. I wish you all Akag Sukkot Samaya. In the coming days, we will be celebrating several important cultural holidays, including Nigeria Independence Day on October 1st, Iraq Independence Day on October 3rd, Uganda Independence Day on October 9th, Cuba Independence Day on October 10th, and Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 10th. October marks the start of Filipino-American Heritage Month, German-American Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, Heritage and Culture Month, and Polish-American Heritage Month. Our city's beautiful diversity is something to cherish and appreciate, and I join all New Yorkers in celebration of our cultures. This month is also a time to shine a light on many afflictions that impact millions of people across this country. October is AIDS Awareness Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Down Syndrome Awareness Month, Dyslexia Awareness Month, and World Autism Month. We recognize the efforts of all New Yorkers who continue to support those impacted by these diseases. And finally, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, when we highlight domestic violence and its devastating consequences, acknowledge its survivors, and uplift their voices. Nationally, 1 in 4 women and nearly 1 in 10 men have experienced sexual or physical violence by an intimate partner during their lifetime. We know there is an undercount due to the trauma and stigma around domestic violence, resulting in people living in fear and silence. There is much work to do to end gender-based violence, and this council has prioritized responses and services to help reduce this violence and help survivors. We will continue to champion these resources that help people to be safe and recover. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. Today, we are voting on several legislative land use and finance items. We will be voting on the following land use items. 231-06 Northern Boulevard will facilitate the enlargement of the Mazumi Restaurant. It will also permit local retail and services on neighboring properties. The council is modifying the application to reduce the size of the area of the proposed overlay by changing its eastern boundary from 234th Street to 233rd Street in Councilmember Palladino's district. 2017 Grand Concourse will facilitate a new nine-story residential building containing approximately 33 affordable housing units, eight of which will be provided to formerly homeless seniors through the Ayers Program in Councilmember Sanchez's district. Halitz North rezoning. This project, in Councilmember Caban's district, will facilitate a significant new mixed-use development on the waterfront of the Halitz Point Peninsula in Northwest Queens. It will include a projected 1,340 housing units, 333 permanently affordable units, 525 parking spaces, 525 bicycle spaces, 1,800 square feet of commercial use, 21,500 square feet of community facility space, and approximately 1 acre of open space, including a waterfront esplanade. The council is modifying the application to map the MIH option to include the deep affordability and amend the site plan to restore the pedestrian walkway to its regulated width of 10 feet. I want to emphasize the commitments that were secured by Councilmember Caban and the council for this project to benefit the entire community. NYCHA's Astoria Houses Tenant Association will receive $1 million to benefit its residents. Outstanding. There will be 10,000 square feet of community facility space set aside for urban upbound to manage a job incubator program and provide local programming, as well as Zone 126 to use as its new headquarters for $1 in annual rent. Outstanding. There is a labor agreement with 32BJSEIU and a commitment to hire an experienced maintenance crew to provide the upkeep of rain gardens, shoreline plantings, and other landscaping in the public promenade. And finally, a partnership with NYC Kids Rise has been established to benefit scholarship programs for local youth. Outstanding. These are tremendous wins for current residents, future residents, workers, the entire community, and our entire city. And I thank Councilmember Caban once again for her work on this important project, along with everyone who played a role, including the local community and our very own land use staff. Thank you all so much for this. Additionally, we will also be voting on the following finance items. Proposed Resolution 306A, which will set October 12th, 2022, as the date for a public hearing on legislation to authorize increases in the annual expenditures for five business improvement districts: the Fifth Avenue bid, the 125th Street bid, the Columbus Amsterdam bid, the Dumbo bid, and the Court Livingston Skimmerhorn bid. We will also vote on a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Lastly, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation today. Intro 116A, sponsored by the council's Small Business Committee Chair Julie Menon, would require the Department of Small Business Services to create an online small business one-stop-shop portal that includes all permit and license applications, as well as related applicable information needed to open and operate a small business of any kind in New York City. The portal, which would be required to be available in English and 10 other languages, would allow business owners to track the status of their permit and license applications and allow business owners to settle or pay outstanding balances on notices of violation. Next, Intro 383A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would clarify the dates by which a commercial landlord must notify the city if a space has become vacant. The city would then keep a more up-to-date registry of storefront vacancies that would be made available to the public. This bill serves as a continuation of legislation the council passed at the request of then Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, which created a citywide commercial premises registry. Thank you to staff Rachel Cordero and David Seitzer for your work. Finally, a series of 311-related bills from our Technology Committee. Intro 206A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandra Ung, seeks to increase transparency regarding the wait times experienced by individuals who request an interpreter during their calls to the 311 Customer Service Center. It would require the Commissioner of Do-It to compile and make publicly available a monthly data set, including the wait times and number of seconds experienced by individuals who request an interpreter during their calls to the 311 Customer Service Center. Intro 296A, also sponsored by Councilmember Ung, would require the development and updating of a protocol for identifying the languages spoken by callers to 311 in order to better facilitate requests for interpretation services. The bill would also require this protocol and any subsequent updates to the protocol to be posted to the 311 Customer Service Center website within seven days after implementation and updating, respectively. The 311 Customer Service Center would additionally be required to report on the implementation of and updates to the protocol. And Intro 240A, sponsored by our Technology Chair Jennifer Gutierrez, would require that within 30 days of the effective date of the law, city agencies must notify the 311 Customer Service Center of the possible need to add or update a service request category on all 311 platforms. This bill would also require reporting on all such additions and updates, and would require 311 to create a publicly available data set, including information on submission of correspondence from the public requesting the addition to or updating of 311 service request categories. Thank you to staff Irene Bayofsky, Brad Reed, Malak Nasrdeen, and Janita John. Congratulations to all of my colleagues who will pass this important legislation today. Thank you all for your attention, and now I turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader Keith Powers.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now going to move into the discussion of general orders. We have two people signed up right now. We're first going to hear from Councilmember Palladino.
Good afternoon, everybody. And I want to vote yay with an explanation for the expansion of the 231-06 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay rezoning. Since January, I've hosted meetings with Mazumi, CB11, Douglasston Civic, and the Borough President. I've done my research, listened to all sides, and made the necessary adjustments to arrive at a compromise that benefits everyone. Mazumi is a family-owned, multi-generational small business serving the Douglasston community for many years. The owners initially sought to expand the BSA variance, but that goal was made impossible. After several years, Mazumi changed its course and now seeks approval of the rezoning to establish a C22 commercial overlay within the existing R12 residential district from Mazumi to 234th Street. Through extensive discussion with the community and Mazumi, I have decided to reduce the extent of the rezoning to 233rd Street in order to minimize the potential effects of rezoning. I have also secured a commitment on the maximum size and capacity of this expansion so that it is less likely to cause any disruptions to traffic. My vote today establishes predictable zoning controls on Northern Boulevard. Because of the underlying R1, R2 zoning remains in place, no tall buildings or apartment buildings of any kind will be permitted. Instead, the rezoning gives the property owners the ability to invest in their businesses without extensive and costly government oversight. With this vote, I helped small businesses to grow while blocking overdevelopment. I was elected to serve District 19 to both preserve our neighborhoods and to support our small businesses. With my vote to approve this commercial overlay with some common sense modifications, we will achieve both goals. I have always practiced transparency in my district. No matter which problems I tackle, I strive at solutions that are best interest to all. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Palladino. We'll now hear from Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Sanchez. Okay, we'll now go to Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to speak in support of the project that is going through in my district, 2017 Grand Concourse, which is 100% affordable housing development. It's going to be 34 units on a very small site, and it was previously not as affordable. We kind of got into it during our first discussion with the developers, which is actually the day that we had a shooting in front of my office. And I was in the middle of saying to them, right before we heard the pop-pop, literally, that we needed more and deeper affordability in every single development that was going to come to our district with city support. And they obliged. It's a third homeless set aside and 10%, 30% AMI. And I'm just very proud to support this project and urge all of us, congratulations to Councilmember Caban, to always just be very attentive to these projects because they get subsidized at really high levels. This one is $782,000 per unit to preserve the long-term affordability. And so, we have the right, and we should and must demand, every time that these projects come to our district, that we are getting exactly what our communities need. So with that, thank you so much, and I hope that you all join me in supporting.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals who'd like to speak on general orders? Okay, we'll now move over to the report of special committees.
None.
Report of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Finance, REZO 306A, Business Improvement Districts.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered REZO 327, Transparency REZO.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU92 and REZO 333, and LU93 and REZO 334, 2017 Grand Concourse.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Small Business, Intro 116A, Small Business Portal.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 383A, Commercial Property Vacancy Law.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Technology, Intros 206A, 240A, and 296A, 311 Customer Service Centers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, Intro 179A.
Laid over.
LU89 and REZO 335 through LU95 and REZO 339, 231-06 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay and Halitz North.
Coupled on general orders, and I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to vote aye on all, but I did want to take a moment to recognize a member of my team who will be departing tomorrow. a member of my team who will be departing tomorrow, Alex Hunter. Alex has been an instrumental part of my team since almost the very beginning, and I'm excited for his next chapter, and I thank him for his service to the 31st Council District. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you vote? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Williams.
I also vote aye on all, and I just wanted to wish my Chief of Staff a very happy birthday. Happy birthday, Ashley.
Salamanca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to vote aye on all call-ups, and with permission, I'd like to vote on all coupled items on the general order calendar and all resolutions, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Lewis.
I vote aye on all.
Mealy.
I want to thank our Majority Leader, and I would like to vote on all land use call-ups, general orders, and I vote aye on all and all resolutions, and thank you.
Thank you. Borelli.
Thank you. No on preconsidered Rezo 327 and Intro 383A. Thanks. Aye on the rest.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye on all.
Ariola.
I'd just like to mention that on October 10th, it is also Columbus Day, which is celebrated by a majority of the 800,000 Americans of Italian descent here in this city and in the five boroughs. For my vote, I vote aye on all except for Rezo 327 and Intro 383A, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I want to, through full disclosure, my son, Jelani Johnson, works for Brick Arts Brooklyn, Inc., and I want to commend Councilmember Sanchez for sticking with the battle to make it 100% affordable. So I want to commend her for that work. I saw what she had to go through, and this is what we really need to be doing. And I'm voting no on the Halitz North and Caban's district because while we talked about all of those other things, which are wonderful, only 10% of the units will be at 30% of the AMI, 10% of the units will be at 50% of the AMI, and 75% of the units will be market. And that's not my idea of affordability. And so, I think we need to do better and not go for the other set decorations when the fundamental part of it is for affordability. This is how our communities are gentrified. So I vote no on that item, and aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Butcher.
I vote aye on all, and congratulate the council members who worked on these projects that will help address the housing shortage in New York City.
Brennan.
Aye on all.
Brewer.
I vote aye on all. I do want to commend the Columbus Avenue bid on their efforts over many years, and Peter Anst in particular, who's the director. And I want to say Intro 383, which I have the honor of sponsoring, and much thanks to Councilmember Menon, and it went through the committee, is a data information that will help us keep track of vacancies that are in storefronts, a really important piece of legislation that talks about how we can use data sets more significantly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
Wish to join my colleague in acknowledging Columbus Day, which is a holiday deeply important to the many Staten Islanders I represent, home to more Italians in Richmond County than any other county in the country. Very proud of that fact as a fellow Italian-American. And I'd like to disclose on the record that we are funding CUNY in this transparency resolution, and my spouse is a student at CUNY, and I'll be voting no on preconsidered Resolution 327 and Introduction 383A, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all. Thank you.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all. And briefly, we obviously have an affordable housing crisis in our city. I want to congratulate my colleagues who are taking real steps to help resolve that crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
My apologies, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye on all.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
Aye on all, except Rezo 327 and Intro 383A, and I'm wishing everyone out there a happy Columbus Day.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Kagan.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Menon.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm really proud to have my bill, Intro 116, being voted on today. I really want to thank the 40 cosponsors of this bill. This creates, as the Speaker said, a one-stop-shop portal which will consolidate every city agency permit that a small business needs to open or to operate. Currently, for example, if you're a restaurant owner, you're dealing with 20 different forms that you have to file, and often you have to take off multiple days off of work just to do this. This one-stop-shop portal will be in 11 different languages, so we really focused on language access, and we're basically making it much easier for small businesses to operate. I also want to thank the Speaker for her leadership in moving this bill forward and helping our small businesses, and I want to thank my Chief of Staff Jonathan Shutt, my Legislative and Budget Director Brandon Jordan, Jeff Baker, Andrea Vasquez, David Seitzer, for their incredibly hard work on this legislation. And finally, this bill is really going to lift the burdensome regulatory difficulties that thousands of our small businesses face. Thank you, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye on all.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Nurse.
I just want to say I'm very much looking forward to celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. Certainly not just even the name of the day doesn't even begin to deal with the genocidal acts conducted by Christopher Columbus, murdering, raping, maiming, massacring, but my sympathies to those who celebrate that, and I vote aye on all.
Palladino.
Well, I would be remiss if I did not recognize Columbus Day. Okay, and I sort of am upset that the chambers here has not done so, that we as individuals have to recognize it. So it's totally overlooked. Have a problem with that, but that's okay. I go forward with voting aye on all except for Rezo 327 and Intro 383A. Happy Columbus Day, everybody.
Thank you. Wrestler.
A lot to follow. Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Firstly, I'd just like to congratulate my good friends at the Dumbo bid and the Court Livingston Skimmerhorn bid on increasing their annual expenditure. These are two really wonderful business improvement districts that do so much to improve the dynamism and the cleanliness and just the activation of our communities in downtown Brooklyn and Dumbo. In the future, I hope that we can start including market rate residential rental properties in these business improvement district assessments as, you know, these areas have gentrified enormously and the residents benefit so much from the services of the bid. But I'm very pleased that we are helping to allow these organizations to do even more good work in our communities. And while I have a great deal of appreciation for the Italian-American community here in New York and across the nation, I think it is wrong that we continue to celebrate Columbus Day, and it is Indigenous Peoples' Day that we should be honoring and celebrating these two Mondays from now, and, you know, hope that we as a chamber can do more to, you know, rename places like Columbus Park and downtown Brooklyn to better celebrate the folks who've made contributions to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Richardson. Jordan.
I would like to be associated with the comments of my colleague, Councilmember Sandy Nurse, regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day. I would also like to say that there's plenty of folks we should bring into the light, including many Italian-Americans, just, you know, those who have done good. And with that, I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye.
Rivera. Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, Majority Leader, I want to just apologize that I wasn't here to adopt the minutes. I was breastfeeding the child. So I want to vote aye on all with the exception of preconsidered Resolution 327 because there are some decisions in there that adversely affect my district, and I cannot in good conscience support this transparency resolution at this time. And with that, I vote aye on all with the exception of preconsidered Resolution 327.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
I vote aye on all, and I would also like to wish Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala a happy belated birthday. Oh, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday. Councilmember Ung.
Aye on all.
Velasquez.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
Aye on all, except no on preconsidered Rezo 327 and no on Intro 383A. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaeger.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to wish anybody any kind of happy anything. Instead, I'm going to talk about the taxes that we are on a march towards raising today. Now, you may not notice that if you take a look at the agenda because it's hidden. It's a hidden tax on people all across the city, and it's the rubber stamp that we wield when we say, let's set a public hearing for the increase in the annual expenditure that a number of bids are going to spend. I love a good public hearing, just like anybody else. It's a lot of fun. 14 days from now, people all across the city will be invited by a publication in a newspaper of record that any of these five bids choose to come here into this building, go into that room next door at 10 o'clock in the morning, and tell us why they don't think they should pay anymore. How many people do we really think are going to show up? Bids are wonderful. I've said this before, they're there to pick up the slack for where the city has failed neighborhoods. So the bids get created, and then the tax goes on people's bills. They have to pay it. They don't get a credit against the property taxes that they're already paying. There are bids that we are going to, we're doing the march towards acceptance. And make no mistake, this is a rubber stamp. This is, you know, we're setting a public hearing, but we're going to pass it. The increase is going to happen. It's not like, you know, in a couple of weeks, we're going to come back and say, oh, no, we're not passing any increase. It's happening. One of these bids, I'm sure they do wonderful work, $8 million is how much they're going to spend. Another one is $1.8 million. The money's coming out of people's pockets. We talk a lot about how we don't raise the tax rate in the city. We haven't increased the tax rate on the property taxes, but this is a hidden way to do it. So I'm going to vote no with respect to my colleagues who love these bids, and I love them too, but I don't love the taxes that they take out of people's pockets. No on Resolution 306. I also vote no on Introduction 383, consistent with how I voted on the underlying statute, and I abstain on Resolution 327. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Well, unlike my colleague, I am going to add another happy diva-lee on October 24th to all who are celebrating. With that, I vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar, adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, zero abstentions, with the exceptions of Intro 383A, adopted by a vote of 43 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, zero abstentions. Resolution 327, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and one abstention. Land use items 90, 91, 94, 95, and accompanying resolutions, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 306A, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. We'll now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. There are no resolutions on today's agenda, so we're now going to move into general discussion. We'll start with Councilmember Kagan.
Thank you, Majority Leader Powers, for the opportunity to speak. For too long, New York City Housing Authority has avoided having to answer for the abysmal response times for housing residents' concerns. I have seen on multiple occasions, service requests be marked resolved while nothing had been done. Meanwhile, some property managers seemingly go out of their way to avoid addressing residents' issues, concerns, taking weeks, if not months, to make even the simplest fix. It's unacceptable that residents have to wait for so long to get even the most basic services, and NYCHA must be held accountable. That is why I'm introducing today Intro 724, requiring NYCHA to report on their responsiveness to tenants' complaints and service requests. These requests cannot be left unanswered and cannot be put on a back burner, and NYCHA must address these issues in a timely manner. I urge all my colleagues to sign on Intro 724 and hold NYCHA accountable for their mistreatment of tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Now go to Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Brewer. We'll go to Councilmember Brewer, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Lee.
Okay. I have three bills that we're considering today. One has to do with stolen property. I believe that many of us are experiencing theft from stores, and this would make it a misdemeanor if it is placed on the open market online. Number two, the issue of public space. I know that we are all enjoying plazas. We are enjoying activities that take place on them, but there isn't a lot of coordination in terms of what is going on. There are different agencies involved, so this would make a better coordination taking place at the city level. And then, the final issue is just trying to, what was the one? Oh, the issue of the very important one that we've been working on for a long time, which is figuring out how to have a land bank. And I think if we have a hearing, then there'll be many additions that I know Councilmember Nurse and others have suggested, but we do have the opportunity now with land to be actually in the perpetuity of affordable. Because I know too many times, even when a nonprofit takes over a building, it gets sold to the highest bidder, and you do not have a permanently affordable structure, even though that is what it is intended to do, the land bank within that. Those are the three bills that are being considered for today, and I look forward to your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Hey, good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. I'm proud to introduce legislation today that will create a website for DOE schools to post their surplus supplies and to facilitate school-to-school exchanges. The legislation, Intro 725, was actually driven by a conversation at the grassroots level in my district where we learned from a local teacher about the need for a system that school administrators can use to communicate and coordinate with one another about their inventories and resources to save precious taxpayer dollars and also not let supplies go to waste. Given the fiscal predictions and as we head into another budget cycle, legislation that promotes efficiency and reduces waste is badly needed. So I've wanted to... So I wanted to say thank you and hope all of you can sign on and support.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Farias, followed by Councilmember Caban.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Happy Fall. Celebration is definitely in the air this month with several holidays taking place. So first, I want to start off with saying we welcomed little Amal this morning here at City Hall. She represents a message of hope and solidarity for displaced people everywhere. Thank you to Amal for joining us on the steps today. It was really an honor to have you here, and we wish her a safe, continued journey. I want to wish all my Hindu neighbors and those who celebrate Navratri a happy Navratri. I hope the next six days are filled with joy and celebration as we honor goddess Durga. It is also Hispanic Heritage Month, y'all. This month and every month, we take time to highlight and celebrate all that our Latino culture has to offer and all that we have given to make this city, state, and country great, and I want to especially acknowledge the diversity we have in this body. Next up, additionally, I want to wish a happy Rosh Hashanah to all of our Jewish community members and everyone who celebrates. Lastly, we have October 10th coming up, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and this day celebrates, recognizes, and honors the beautiful traditions and cultures of the Indigenous people, not just here in America, but around the world. It draws attention to the pain, trauma, and broken promises that we, that were erased by the celebration of Columbus Day. Today, we're, I have two bills being introduced on the floor. First, with Councilmember Menon, Intro 727, which would require the mayor's office on ending domestic violence and gender-based violence to operate family justice centers 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and to conduct a public campaign to inform the community of this change. My second bill is with Councilmember Salamanca that would increase the quality of life for all our seniors in nursing homes. Currently, nursing homes have to pay out-of-pocket for private collection businesses. Intro 720 would require the DSNY pickup of those ways from nursing homes at no cost to the homes, and I urge my colleagues to sign on. Two minutes.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Thank you. I want to take just a couple of minutes to talk about Puerto Rico. The last time I was on the island, I met with organizers. I visited farmers in the mountains. I visited my family. And Puerto Ricans are tired. They've had to survive all manners of disaster, hurricanes and earthquakes, which, by the way, Puerto Rico is one of the top five places on the planet most affected by the climate crisis, and so what's happening there is all of our futures. And they have also had to survive the disasters of imperialism and colonization. And if you want to help Puerto Ricans, we need more than offering water and generators as aid after disasters, but a commitment to support Puerto Ricans' ability to thrive and make their own future. Organizers there share that it's really hard to mobilize when you feel like you don't have the energy to get up. It's la breva, the perpetual struggle. And we, the diaspora, and also all people who support justice everywhere, need to support this freedom fight. We need to end the Jones Act, not just simply waive it. We need to end PROMESA, the fiscal board. We have to cancel the debt, and we have to say pahuera to Luma and the privatization of energy, and fight for Puerto Ricans' right to self-determination, the right to decide our own futures. And so I hope that others will join in, in supporting those efforts of the folks, again, that are, that are on the island, living through these struggles every single day. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Villas.
I want to commend Council-
Followed by Councilmember Villas, and then we'll go to Councilmember Butcher, and if anybody else has things they can sign up. Thanks.
Does that mean I go? Oh. I want to commend Councilmember Aviles for a powerful, strong hearing that you provided for us and the people of NYCHA. You made us feel proud. You were strong, and we say to NYCHA, stop privatizing and start sanitizing your water, because that's the real issue. So congratulations on a powerful hearing. As far as Columbus is concerned, most historians said he never stepped foot on American soil. Most historians said he left Spain on the Nina, the Pinta, and the Santa Maria, and went to Hispaniola, where he raped, murdered, was a racist colonizer. And even if you're Italian, you should not celebrate a colonizing racist rapist. And we should stop lying to our children. Columbus did not discover America for two reasons. One, he never stepped foot in America, and two, you can't discover a place where people already exist. And if you could do that, then I'm discovering Manhattan. It never happened. We should not celebrate Columbus. And some people say, let's do both. No, not a colonizing rapist murderer should not be celebrated. Thank you.
We'll now go to Councilmember Villas. Finally, we'll hear from, and then after that, we'll hear from Councilmember Butcher.
Colleagues, I emphatically support Councilmember Caban's remarks and Councilmember Barron's remarks. For those of you who represent districts with an industrial business zone, chances are, you know quite well, the challenges faced by rapid proliferation of last-mile logistics facilities. Chances are that if you represent communities that have seen the rapid proliferation of last mile, you also represent environmental justice communities, where decades of discriminatory planning has caused Black and Brown communities to suffer the brunt of the impact of environmental contaminants. Our communities exhibit disparate health outcomes as a result, included elevated asthma rates and elevated pedestrian safety risks, to name just a few, that relate directly to the growth of these facilities. While I continue to grapple with a way to more directly regulate last-mile facilities in the intro, I'm introducing legislation today that is intended to mitigate the impacts of the massive uptick in delivery vehicles in my district, especially in the community of Red Hook. These delivery vehicles are congesting our roadways and poisoning our air. Today, I'm introducing Bill 707 in conjunction with the Bronx, with the Borough President, Councilmembers Caban, Gutierrez, and Wrestler, which calls on New York City to begin monitoring air quality at designated heavy-use thoroughfares. I'm also going to be introducing, also introduce, Intro 708 calls on the DOT to undergo a redesign and to improve safety, reduce congestion, and mitigate harmful impacts and emissions that are continuing to have community health and well-being impacts. I urge all of my colleagues to sign on to engage in conversations around the impacts of these incredible facilities. And lastly, I want to thank my colleagues for their support of Puerto Rico and the Dominican Republic, and to call attention to the island of Cuba, who also was battered by a storm, Hurricane Ian. Please support Cuba. Please support the resolution to lift the embargo and end the travel ban. The Cuban people need our support.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Councilmember Butcher, and then Councilmember Ose.
Illegally covered up license plates allowed drivers to evade camera tickets 1.5 million times between March of 2020 and January 2022. But the only reason we know that is because of a Freedom of Information Act request filed by the city, the publication of the city. That information should be made publicly available, so we know more about the issue that we're trying to solve for. So today, I'm introducing a bill that would require the Department of Transportation to post this information publicly and regularly, so we can monitor progress on this issue. And I want to wish a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day to my colleagues.
Thank you. And finally, we'll hear from Councilmember Ose.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I do want to echo the sentiments shared by our speaker at the beginning of this stated meeting in regards to New York City's handling of the migrant crisis. As many of us all know, conservative governors across this country that tout the words of Jesus Christ in the Bible are sending migrants to New York City with expecting us to turn them away or treat them poorly. Last Friday, I had the privilege to go on an unannounced tour of a shelter within my district with Councilmember Hudson, and it was, I was fairly impressed with the work that was being done by the provider there. Brooklyn is also bearing the brunt of the influx of migrants. Thus, the resources that we have are quite limited, so I'm hoping that the leadership in this council, all of our colleagues in this council, as well as colleagues in government, continue advocating for resources from the state and federal level to keep our migrant neighbors safe and provide them with the resources that they need to get back on their feet. But I'm very proud of New York City for, for doing what we're doing in terms of handling the crisis. It's not perfect, but we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe last, we'll hear from Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to take a second to briefly talk about the gun violence crisis affecting our city. I'm looking at the numbers now. This year, we've had 1,246 shooting victims. 1,246 people who will live the rest of their lives with so much trauma, not only the victims, but their families. Our families deserve safety, regardless of their income, regardless of the neighborhood that they live in. If we don't have safety, nothing else matters. I've visited so many of my schools in my district, and the issue that consistently comes up is safety. And how can our children feel safe? And how can our children focus on school if they don't feel safe? How can children take advantage of opportunity if they don't feel safe? If they feel that a shooting can happen any second? As I mentioned in the last stated meeting, there's a park in my district, received the most state-of-the-art renovation that I could imagine, $15 million in renovation. And the people in that community, the families in that community, and the children in that community could only see that park from a distance, because there's shootings and there's gunshots ringing on a nightly basis. Everyone deserves access to safety, regardless of the income or neighborhood that they live in. Again, 1,246 shootings this year in the city of New York. That is wild. That is crazy. We need to be asking ourselves many questions. One of the questions that we've been talking about is, where are these ghost guns coming from? That is one question that we've been asking ourselves, where are they coming from, and what can we do to stop them? But another question that we need to ask ourselves, this year, we've seized approximately 4,500 guns in our streets. The second question that we need to be asking ourselves is, why are people feeling so comfortable carrying these weapons? Weapons that we know that are dangerous, and weapons that we know could, could and are being used to cause the worst harm that any family can imagine? Yesterday, the first shooting, if I could just use 10 more seconds. Yesterday, the first shooting in my district happened at 6:00 a.m. The next one happened a minute away from a school at 7:00 a.m. No family deserves to live like this. Thank you.
Thank you. And now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
I thank all of my colleagues for their attendance and participation. Thank you. The stated meeting of September 29, 2022, is hereby adjourned.